Okay, I'd like to bring the Ways and Means Committee to order this Tuesday, February 7th at about 4:03 PM. Deanne, will you take the roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
Let's.
Yes.
Do Manzi?
Here.
Krieger?
Yes.
Sigitt?
Here.
Koonan?
Here.
Ryder?
Here.
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 Thank you. Before you, we have the minutes of 1:317. What is your pleasure?
To approve support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. All opposed same time, motion carries. At this time, we have set aside public input, and anybody wishing to speak to the committee can step to the podium, state your name and address, and talk on.
Name's Mike Bushfield, Bangor Township. I'd like to talk about the meeting that we had on the Bayside Park subdivision. If I look at the Supreme Court decision, and I go back to the County of Bay decision, Circuit Court, they just reaffirmed the lower court's decision. It's to be a park. If I look at all of the information that I see in the minutes, the letters, and meetings that were held on November the 9th, 1999, in Bangor Township, they approved it with also noting legal opinion stating it must be used for residential park and recreational purposes. So what is a recreational purpose? Something you can enjoy? Would you go out and play in a confined disposal facility? Well, that was the question. It was never called that. Here's a picture from what was sent, and that's out of the Corps of Engineers' own book, showing it is a confined disposal facility. The DEQ has a remediation plan. It's called Dread Sediment Review. The number is 09018. If you use one, look it up. I'm not going to do your homework for you. You have two resolutions, one in 2009, 2013, that talks about the park being put underneath the county umbrella. The township had no authority to do that. That was supposed to be, according to the deed that was written by Charles and Bella Bump in 1924 and '25, was to be for Bangor Township. You also have a 2014-2018 Bay County recreational plan as well. Again, it was offered up, and it couldn't be offered up. Now, the DEQ, in their great wisdom, put up a mapping system. The mapping system is questionable at best. Here is a picture of that particular property. The property shows it as a swamp in a wetland. So my question is, is it in the floodplain? You'll notice that it is in the floodplain. It is in the coastal management zone as well. Also, when you go to do tests, you cannot do a test on a recreational area if it's still considered on the map as residential too. Can't have it both ways. The testing, nothing was ever discussed as far as the PCB. And the PCB can come from a lot of places. I questioned the natural flow doctrine in 1950s. Here is the flow map. The flow map is showing everything here flowing from south to north. You cannot block the natural water course of water. Now, there was a discussion about capping the top. Was this, I believe, a conspiracy mode or something that was mentioned? There was no conspiracy because that proved that there was a trucking company out of All Gray that took Bangor Township to court for not covering the top. They covered the top. They paid for it. They had it seeded. The top has since been leveled off, removed. So is that a violation of the restricted covenant? Yes. Does this commission, and does the Drain Commission Office have the authority to override a decision that the Circuit Court has made? If you do, take my finger, put it on the law, show me where it's at, because I'm blind to that fact. I cannot find it. The DEQ when asked that question, they said they had no authority to do so. So I would doubt very much if this commission, Drain Commission, I have not asked the township if they had the authority. Are there any questions?
Commissioner, go ahead.
You know, Mike, I did attend that meeting in Bangor a week or so ago, and, you know, I believe it was somebody came in peerless or somebody did some soil borings. And I hadn't leave, so I did not stay till... Are you disputing the borings or what they said they found there when they did the work? Did that make the people happy of what they found there, or is there still some dispute as to what's there?
The dispute is 149,700 cubic yards of material that's there that shouldn't be there. It wasn't the so-called court decision was not broken once. It was broken three different times. And I don't believe they're thinking of 1978 as a correct fact for the dredging spoils. I believe that that may have been, and I wouldn't want to be quoted for sure, but I will find out before the week's out, that that was during a time when they were putting in sanitary sewers in Bangor Township, and they used the place to store, like, road spoils and downed road.
What do they want to use that area for, that land for? Do the people want a park there, or what's...
They ask to be put back to where it was. In other words, you've got a 14-foot wall, and water used to flow straight across. So you build a 14-foot wall all the way around. The ditches are all blocked off. There's no natural flow of water. The natural flow of water backs off and runs off and runs into people's homes. Pools and ponds back. And if I go by, there is a bowl, and it's contained, and I'll use their thinking, that would be like having a bowl, and I take one end and I notch it out. Now, I'm not obviously going to be able to fill it up all the way around, but when it rains and it fills, material falls out. So I'll coin the phrase "The solution to pollution is dilution." And that's what takes place. In which way is it flowing? It's flowing out to south. If I go by the weight trim map, there's supposed to be 196 feet from the center line of the road to the pile. There isn't. You can't find a ditch. There is no ditch. The ditch is nonexistent. Now, we never did, in the meeting, never did discuss the PCB. How did it get there? There was no PCB in the original testing back in '97, as it was said. How did it get there? So you got about roughly, if I look at 149,700 cubic yards, look at a 15-yard dump truck, you're looking at about 9,934 loads of dirt, to give you an idea of the volume. Now, they're saying it's usable. If it is, take it up. You've got to go back to what the court order says. Who has the authority to tell the court, "You can't do it"? I've yet to see any, shall we say, governmental agency outside of the legislative body pass a law and sign into office. At least, that's the way it was when I was taught in school, but that's been a few years back. And I don't see how that encased law, looking it up and reading how that was ever done. So they have not clearly defined the pollution then. And did they use recreational standards, or did they use residential standards? If I go back and look at the map, it's 26.72 acres, but yet it's surrounded on one side, three sides, by homes. It's not like the Hartley landfill when it was polluting outward, and they did testing all around and found high levels of arsenic. They said, "Well, we don't have a criteria for that, so we'll make a recreational level," which means you have to be so far away from it. You cannot be living. Three criterias is how long you stay in one area. One is residential, that's staying in the area, windows open, windows closed. The third one is working in an area. Sure, there are eight or 10 hours because of that.
So what's the solution to that property? What's the solution?
Solution is to try to sit down and adjust to what to do with that spoils, to put the drainage back, the natural flowage, the way it was, and go that way. The DEQ is saying that it's not harmful, toxic, or contaminated. Then is that all going to be free? If it's going to be free for somebody to take it out, fine. But the drainage itself, there is no ditches. And if I go down and I look at the EPA's website, how's my water weight, it's showing that everything's polluted in the area anyways. And the DEQ just come out with a new map, 2017 E. Colite. We're in it. Not just the stream of the Coca-Cola, but all the way around. But most people don't pay attention to this.
Commissioner Krieger, are you any question?
Yep. So Mike, going back through the records that you've done, the ditches that were filled, that's really caused the bulk of, let's say, some of the direction that the DEQ has gone in, with the water running onto others' property, which by state law should never happen. Do you know what the timeframe was?
1978 is the first visual map. You can go back up the MSU GIS library or Historic Aerials, and you can look at the pictures. 1978 shows a retention pool. Now, is that for spoils for Coca-Cola, or was it for when they were doing the drainage? The same time they were doing, putting in sanitary sewers.
Right.
I don't imagine that the underlaymen on in the roads and stuff where they were putting them in were bad or warranted. Did they take it out?
So you're saying back when the sewers were put in, in the township, that's when these ditches were taken out of play?
1978 is when everything started.
And at that time, it would have been Mr. Rosebush that was the...
Drain Commission.
Drain Commissioner.
And everything from that point started to fill in.
But that was the initial start...
Start, that I can see on the maps.
Okay. And then, because they did that, that's one of the major reasons why Mr. Morley's property, the farmland that's always been designated as a farmland, became flooded and now gave the DEQ the opportunity to say that it is a wetland, and he's not allowed to do anything within that area of his acreage?
In 1895, that particular chunk of property was owned by a couple by the name of Peter and Charles Lynn. They're brothers. They immigrated here, and he was also, I believe, Wes Bangor, and then he became Bangor Township Supervisor. He had a 200-acre farm in Section 4.
And that's the Morley farm?
That's the Morley property. There was cows grazing out there in as late as 1960s. The ditch that's there has always been there. If you look at the Winona Coal Mine and go back to 1908, 1910 period, you'll see a railroad spur, the narrow gauge railroad.
Right.
And there's one that runs out there and connects into the other railroad. That ditch was always there. So in the Morley property, his natural flow or water letup was impeded in the beginning of 1978. And I go back and I look further, and I look at properties that acquisitions are wanted on conservation easements, and he's at the top of the list. And then I go back and I look at the Drain Commission's website, and I look at the watershed management plan, Coca-Cola, and I look at inventories. I go to page 90 or 39, and I look at his property is spelled right out, very high grade. And I go to the last page on page 60, and it's telling me that he's in mitigation, and we could be approached in several different ways. Now, if that's not a takings, I don't know what is. And I would think that this entire board would understand that once you get a conservation easement, guess what happens to the property value?
It don't go up.
You guys got to all take a break in your paint. Have to cut. What they did at the plant, when I was down there at steering gear, got to cut. So if that's what you was wanting, all you got to do is stand by, do nothing. Right now, he's being hammered in the ground. That's just the start. And if I look at further down the road, I can see more coming. If you're going to fill in and build in Bangor Township, you've got to pay a dollar fee. I believe the fee, and don't quote me for sure, was $350 for the DEQ to come out and look at your property. They come out and look at your property, they determine whether you can fill or not fill. Now, with that, that's sort of saying I don't have any say over my property. But yet, if I go by the stormwater rules that the Drain Commission Office has up, I'm supposed to have a ditch between me and my neighbor, as to not pond upon my neighbor.
Right. Were there other activities other than 1978 that played a role also, or...
A leveling, a leveling of the entire property. There's a picture of 1978 that I do have here, and it shows mounds of sand, I'll call it sand, that have been piled back there. You can see it. And it's all the way back into the woods. So was there an intentional? I don't want to say it's intentional. Was it accidental? Don't even want to say it's accidental. I want to say I think it was no care. Nobody looked at it. Because the first thing that I think that somebody should have done was to go back and look at, was there a deed on the property, buyer beware. The township does not have the authority to do whatever it wants with a piece of property, as they were acting in the form of a trustee of the property, a guardianship of that property.
That's for the park.
And that's what the Bump family, that's what they wanted. They did own all of Section 33.
So in essence, what's going on at the park is very similar to what happened at the State Park, where our government, in essence, came in and created wetlands and stopped us from having...
At the State Park, I did a little looking in on that. You had a railroad track going down there. And I go back to when there was a manager, and I won't mention names, that decided to take matters into his own hands. And when he did, there was a leak on one of those dykes that Dow Chemical paid for. That dike leaked, so he filled the ditch in to stop the leak. That was after the railroad tracks were gone. So thereby causing pooling and ponding of everybody's property on Loria Road, also changing the outlet to the marsh. Because I stood there and watched them hand dig the marsh opening. That was the time I lived on, down the beach. So there was a lot of at-will, I'll do what I want, things going on.
And that would have been in the 80s?
That would have been probably closer to the 90s. And there was a Resource Management Group study done, which I was on that board, and it talked about how to raise the water level of the marsh. Their idea to raise the water level was to put a walkway to Tower One. When you did that, you've got a retention basin for four drains going in. So now, if you can find mush rats out there, you're going to be doing good. You've got a lot of stuff being pumped out. I think it's Botel, Perrish Road out that way, and that goes out the beach. Counter-clockwise is the current. The current's going to drag it down the shoreline. When it was coming out the lagoon, it was blowing all that so-called sedimentation that was acquiring out in the bay. And yes, the people down the shoreline got it, but you didn't have it from the lagoon opening up.
Right. Okay.
And I have records on all them, too.
I know you do.
I'm a pack rat. Save everything.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other question? Seeing none, thank you, Michael.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else I'd like to come before the committee today? Seeing none, we will move on. Under petitions, A, we have the Bay County Treasurer, the BSA Interface.
Some of them.
We have a motion and support. Was there any questions for Rick Burdinsky, since he's here? Seeing none, Rick? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same time, motion carries. You're good to go. All right. Under B, we have Bay County Sheriff, the acceptance of the Medical Marijuana Oversight Grant. What is your pleasure?
Some of them.
Support. We have a motion and support. Commissioner Ernie Krieger.
Thank you. Sure. On the grant for the, let's say, almost $34,000, and it says it's going to be used for education and communication and enforcement for the Medical Marijuana Act. Questions have come up, why are we spending that much money on educating law enforcement when we have such an out-of-control opium problem here in Bay County? Would that money be better spent trying to educate, communicate, or enforce the laws dealing with that deadly drug versus the marijuana?
This is what that is, is it's a state grant that's coming in, and how it's dispersed through us is it goes by how many medical marijuana cards we have issued in each county. So it's something that's set up through the state, where it's just designated to however many of those cardholders are in each county. That's just coming back for, you know, enforcement of the medical marijuana law, and they're specific on that part of it for the grant has to be used towards that. It's not real specific as far as what we can buy with it. Education's just one of the components, so we could be doing a medical marijuana and a heroin summit at the same time, or something like that.
So you could combine the two together?
Yeah, and it's looking at grow operations. A lot of it can be used for equipment. It's a pretty vast difference, but how that money's designated is just from the state to say that it's for medical marijuana cardholders is where that's coming from.
So does the sheriff's office have a file of everybody in Bay County that has a miracle or miracle?
We have access to the medical marijuana, yeah. We have access to who's got cards throughout this, yeah.
So would they be contacted then for information, or...
The people that are cardholders?
Yes.
No, it's just like a thing where with the money that they have coming in, they're not contacting each one of those people. They just look at every single county in Michigan and say, "Because you have so many cardholders, you're eligible for X amount of dollars for the grant." And every county has a little bit of a different direction, but we don't actually have contact with any one of those particular cardholders.
So when it talks about education, I take it that's just within the Department of the Sheriff?
Yeah, it's just one of the components that they will let us use some of that money towards. If we get that grant, we can say, "Hey, we're going to have, you know, deputies going out to, like, the school for this program," or use it, or its equipment, or it can be stuff for storage and processing for the marijuana when we bring it into the evidence rooms. It's just, it's just one of their categories, is the educational component, which we're already doing kind of a lot of that. Like you said, right now, we're geared towards heroin, but it can be towards, you know, any of that stuff, that they would let us use wages or something if we were going to send somebody out for schools or education.
So there might be officers going to the schools and talking about the pros and cons?
Yeah, yes, sir.
The negative side of it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner, go ahead, Sheriff.
Sheriff, I see this is for, like, $34,000 or whatever. Now, it also says that it's for enforcement. Now, you've got, you know, I think, well over 1,000 cardholders in Bay County. I mean, $34,000 is not going to get you too many guys on patrol for enforcement.
Right.
Is there going to be additional funds, you think, coming down from the state? Because they're going from the seed to sale type of enforcement. Well, man, you've got to have a lot of boots on the ground for that.
A lot of it, I think, certain insurers worked on a lot of this stuff, too, but I think a lot of it is just, it can be anything that's geared towards, like, night vision. A lot of counties throughout the state have bought for it. ATVs, UTVs, stuff to get out, like if there's a marijuana grow operation that's going in a cornfield or something, so they can get out to it. The sheds for if they're bringing stuff back in. There is just any one of those components. And then us, in conjunction with how we're working with Bay, and that even, like, that officer, if he needed equipment or something like that, if they're doing surveillance and stuff, that's kind of where that, from what I've got, from what she's directed us towards, is kind of where that lands.
So we've already, I know there's one for sure, township in Bay County that's already passed marijuana ordinances. They've set up their whole stream for how much they're going to charge for this and that. So, I mean, we have to make sure that, you know, we've got enforcement there to take care of what's commonly termed, I guess, on the street as overreach, right? Because after you get through with your certain customers, you've got to, something's got to happen with that, so it doesn't end up on the street.
Right. That's going to be a whole nother, yeah, that's what the dispensaries and stuff and a lot of that will be a little bit closer to December when they start looking at that. But if they're coming, yeah, that's going to be a whole nother project.
They better send a lot of money.
Yeah, nice.
Sheriff, does this, the enforcement, does it require different equipment, you know, like, I could drive this under influence alcohol, you do breathalyzer. Is there different equipment when there's marijuana involved?
They do a lot with the medical marijuana, where it's like a DRVA Drug Recognition Expert is trained above and that, where they come up with, like, horizontal gaze and stagismus is one thing that they'll run on a driver. If it's alcohol suspected, it works another way. If it's somebody that you think is driving on drugs or something, so there is training and stuff they look at to test for that roadside. We don't have anything yet that, like a PBT you're referring to, or something like that for alcohol that we're using.
They don't make it, or we don't have it?
There's stuff that's out there where they can do some swabs and stuff for it, but we don't have anything that we're using yet.
Okay, so that's, so part of this money is for that, too, that you, part of being able to recognize these guys, too, when they're out on the track.
Yeah, we can use funds for any of that kind of stuff for training or any of that. It's pretty open right now as far as what they're letting us look into, you know, that we can use.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next, we have the 2017 Marine Safety Program Grant.
Some of them.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. The Equitable Sharing Program fiscal year 2017. What is your pleasure on that?
Some of them.
Motion and support. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Road Patrol Service Agreements with Pool Townships. What is your pleasure?
Some of them.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item, or Category C, we have the Court Administrator, the Treatment Court Grants. What is your pleasure on that?
Some of them.
We have a motion and support. Commissioner Krieger.
Yep, just somebody here from the courts. So Kim, back, I want to say it was in January, Judge Gill was looking for some funding.
Yes.
And I'm wondering if this is not something parallel to what he was trying to go after, and if it would help his effort.
Post the meeting that happened last month, Judge Gill and Collida and I got together, and she authorized him up to $4,000 to have that grant writer work on the grant. So he has chosen to do that. That would come out of our lump sum budget.
Very good.
This request here is including that grant plus the other grants that we've applied for every year.
Okay, but did this gentleman, then, that we're bringing in for the $4,000 involve with this grant writing?
Yes, one of the grants in this thing, yes.
He did?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Glad to hear that. There was a change of heart.
It worked out.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Category D, the Health Officer, the Amendment to the CPBC agreement. What is your pleasure?
Some of them.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Category E, we have mosquito control. E1 is the 2017 Scrap Tire Project.
Some support.
We have a motion of support. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Oh, Commissioner Creager.
Just someone here from mosquito control?
She's coming.
Good. So when this gets all established, I'm hoping that what we can do is coordinate with Pinconning, Banger Township, maybe Hampton, whoever's in the area, so we could do it all on that same Saturday.
Yes, as in years past, we've worked with Hampton and Banger to coordinate with your cleanup date. And we've been talking with Commissioner Durantchik too, for the same reason, with the northern townships.
So as soon as we get that confirmed date-
Correct, correct.
-it'll be easier for us to make sure that the township-
Correct. Typically, we work with you, I believe, to coordinate your cleanup date.
For Banger, yep.
Yeah, end of May, early June.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. E2 is the New Jersey Light Trap Agreements, what is your pleasure?
Some support.
We have a motion of support. Any discussion at all? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next, we have E3, which is the Control Materials for Chemicals, I believe.
Some support.
We have a motion of support. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next, we have F, which is Supervisor of Building and Grounds. Under F1, we have Agreement with IBID US Online Auction.
Some support.
We have a motion of support. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Under F2, we have the Fairway mower, and this is only in case we need it. This is what we approved the last couple of years. So we have a motion and support. Commissioner Creager.
Thank you. So, I don't know if this goes to you, John, or to Deb, but I know that, like Mr. Lett said, we had made a, um, and put money aside in case we were to have an issue last summer with that equipment. I would say that we should probably start looking, even though it hasn't busted down. Going online, there's, there are a lot of golf courses that are making any money. And I know they're downsizing and selling equipment. Maybe there may be an opportunity there where we can hone in on a piece of equipment in the spring so that we've got backup, because at some point, it is going to say it's dead. So I hope that we're, we would consider watching the golf courses that are not doing very well. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Under G, we have 911 Central Dispatch. What is a travel request for Ryan Gale to attend the Tyler Connect 2017 Conference in San Antonio?
Some support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next, under H, we have Personnel Director, Tuition Reimbursements for Evan Griffiths from the District Court, Leah Forney from the District Court, and Mary Jo Hill from the Health Department.
Motion to receive.
We have a motion and support. Motion to receive. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Under I, we have Personnel and Benefit Supervisor, Revised Blue Cross Blue Shield Stop Loss Agreement. What is your pleasure?
Some support.
We have a motion of support. Any discussion? Commissioner Turner.
Tiffany, maybe we could get a little bit of a explanation on this. I think it's a good thing that we're saving significant money. Now, this is all the Medicare-eligible retirees?
That's correct. So the board approved moving the Medicare-eligible and retirees over to a Medicare Advantage Plan, which is a fully insured plan. It provides more coverage for retirees that were on the Blue Cross Blue Shield Plan. Because of that move, we have to have an updated stop loss agreement because the number of covered individuals have changed.
Which saved us money.
Mm-hmm.
Now, this is, this is a supplement, the supplemental plan being that these folks are covered in the Medicare.
That's correct, yeah.
Now, what was the reason? Can you, is there any particular reason why you would save a significant amount of dollars like that?
Because it's a, it's just a fully insured plan that subsidized. What happened was Angela Garner with Broner Brown, who is our agent, came to us with this option. And after we looked at the coverage and the amount that the county could save, there really wasn't much of an option.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Creager.
I have the Medicare Advantage Plan, and it is a lot cheaper. Yeah, it's more, it's a managed care program, so there's some, you know, you have to get prior costs and things like that, but it's significantly lower than the market otherwise.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next, under J, we have Payables, which is General, the Bayonet, and Center Ridge Arms. What is your pleasure?
Some support.
We have a motion of support. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Under Finance Officer, we have K1, which is the Analysis of the General Fund Equity for 2016 and '17, motion to receive.
Motion to receive. Support.
We have a motion of support. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Next, we have the Executive Directive for 2007-11, which is an update. Motion to receive, would be heard.
Some support.
Okay.
Put it down however you want.
We have a motion and support. Any discussions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next is K3, which is the Health Department, the 2017 Fee Schedule.
Some support.
We have a motion of support. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next, we have Referrals. I don't think we have any. Unfinished business, I think we don't have any of that. New business, we have one item that we'd like to put, it was given to you. It is the new Housing Department Director at the Hampton High Rise. So, I don't know if anybody, if you all had a chance to read that. Position of the Housing Director in Bay County, and it's, uh, two submitted by Jim Barcia and it's to hire Zachary Brunet. So, that's the new director.
I'd like to move that forward, sir.
Support.
We have a motion of support. Any discussion?
I'd just like to thank the honorable members of the board for adjusting your agenda today to sort of help us put a person in to fill a vacancy that occurred last January. And it is, I think, a necessary appointment. Janelle Box has been doing a great job, but she's working alone along with the maintenance personnel out there. And there's 99 residents, or 99 units, maybe more residents. But Janelle's been carrying the load, and we're anxious to get the new director, should you confirm him, into place to help alleviate some of the pressure and stress on the, trying to manage a facility of that size alone is kind of a challenge. So, the person that has been selected to be the new director, we think, is going to do a great job. We expect great things from him, and hopefully you will possibly consider his appointment. But I mostly want to thank you for adjusting your schedule as you, as you recognized, I guess, our plea to try to get some help out there at Center Ridge Arms. It's a lot of people to take care of, and in a very challenging position. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next, we don't have a full session, do we?
We do not, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Any miscellaneous items that we have? Seeing none. Next to announcements, are there any announcements coming up?
Move to adjourn.
More support.
We have a motion of support, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Where are we here?